Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that Clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulcher, Beaumont, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hanford is not here right now. Before I move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, can I get a confirmation was Councilmember Hanford to be here this evening? Okay. Okay. Drew, would you mind leading us on the pledge since we're doing Purple Heart Day?
Sure.
Thank you.
Public allegiance, and we will do the flag at the United States of America, the Republic of America, our nation, our God, our individual, the liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Please let the record show that Councilmember Hanford just entered Chambers 702. Also, Councilmember Gamble contacted me earlier today. He indicated that he wasn't certain if he was going to be able to attend this evening, but would likely be attending remotely if he could. I received another message from him within the last hour and a half where he indicated that he may be 30 minutes late. So I would request that unless there's opposition, that we go ahead and consider his absence as excused if he doesn't make it this evening. Otherwise, I'll announce for the record if he shows up at roughly 30 minutes out. Any objection to that? Saying none, I'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Oh, yep, public comments. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and go on to public comments. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the council this evening on any items? All right, saying none, I will avoid reading the script for that. I am going to ask, though, that council allow me to make a modification to the agenda. I was going to present the proclamation recognizing August 7th, 2024, as the Purple Heart Day. And as we do have somebody from BFW here this evening, as Drew's here, I'd like to go ahead and read that into the record right now so that he doesn't have to stay to the end of the meeting. Okay, is there any objection to me reading that in now? All right, thank you very much. So I want to go ahead and read this in. Proclamation recognizing August 7th, 2024, as Purple Heart Day. Whereas on August 7th, 1782, George Washington established the Badge of Military Merit, which was the first medal authorized for enlisted soldiers in the Continental Army to recognize a singularly meritorious action by a soldier. And whereas on February 22nd, 1932, U.S. Army Chief of Staff Douglas MacArthur established the Purple Heart Award in the spirit of the Badge of Military Merit in honor of George Washington's bicentennial birthday and authorized the award for soldiers in the United States Army for soldiers who are wounded or lose their lives in military action. And August 7th is annually recognized as Purple Heart Day. And whereas in 1942, President Franklin Roosevelt expanded the Purple Heart Award to other branches of the United States military by authorizing the Navy Department to award the Purple Heart to personnel wounded or killed in action, beginning with the attack on Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941. And today, the Purple Heart is authorized for people serving in all branches of the United States military who are wounded or lose their lives in military actions. And whereas following the attack on Pearl Harbor until the day she passed away, Eleanor Roosevelt carried in her wallet a piece of paper with the following written upon it: Dear Lord, lest I continue in my complacent ways, help me to remember if someone somewhere died for me today, and if there be war, help me to remember to ask, am I worth dying for? And in our daily walk, we should always remember those serving and their families and honor their service and their sacrifices in our words, our hearts, and our actions. And whereas the word Ronnie Junior Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7511, which represents and advocates for veterans in the community of Monroe, requested the city of Monroe declare itself a Purple Heart City. And whereas on December 7th, 2021, Monroe Mayor and City Council jointly issued a proclamation declaring the city of Monroe as a Purple Heart City. And since 2014, August 7th has been a day to honor and remember people wounded or have lost their lives in action and in service to our country. And now therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the city of Monroe, do hereby recognize and proclaim August 7th, 2024, as Purple Heart Day in our community to remembering and honoring recipients of the Purple Heart Award in our words, our actions, and our hearts. So I thank you for coming this evening, and I'm going to invite you to come on forward to receive this and have the council come up as well. You can have Jody take a couple photos. Appreciate that. We'll come up in front of the diocese. Yes. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Turn to the council for motion or other. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
Have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Foulcher to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is item 6.1, Resolution Number 2024-015, levy lid lift ballot measure. Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The request this evening is for council to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 2024-015. That's to place a measure on the November 5 ballot, asking voters whether the city should levy regular property taxes in excess of 1% to support parks maintenance and public safety. The council discussed its strategic priorities at its April 30 workshop, and park maintenance, parks operations, and public safety programs were consistent themes during that workshop. These themes are also consistent with the priorities that have surfaced from various community member surveys, including Imagine Monroe, our creation of the city's new brand, the comprehensive plan, and the Park and Recreation Open Space Plan. Monroe's growth has resulted in greater needs for services. Parks maintenance staff were reduced from eight park maintenance workers to six in 2008. Those positions have not been restored. There's been a 29% increase, that's 81 acres, of park land added to the city since 2008, a 44% increase in field reservations, and a 400% increase in permitted events. The community feels public safety and appreciates all of the city's public safety programs. A 2019 staffing study for the police department recommended augmenting existing staff to improve community proactive efforts, including animal control, parking enforcement, business watch, and community outreach. The council discussed revenue options at meetings on June 4th, June 18th, and July 9th. Those discussions included discussing the use of banked capacity, a levy lid lift, stormwater utility tax, and business and occupation taxes. The city's current levy rate, which is 86 cents, has fallen from $1.46 back in 2013. That's a 41% decrease. And looking forward, our sales taxes are currently flat and are expected to continue to decline into the next budget biennium. So the levy rate alternatives that the council had previously discussed at the last meeting on July 9th, a 20 cent rate increase, which would generate approximately $927,000 or $10.42 per month for the average homeowner in Monroe, that would provide enough funding for parks maintenance workers and a community service officer. And then that includes then the equipment that those staff members would need as well. There's also in your packet an option for a 22 cent rate increase that would generate just over a little over $1 million and would cost the average home $10.84 per month. So just a little over 42 cents in addition would generate just a little over $1 million. So what we are asking for council this evening then is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 2024-015. The deadline to have a measure in front or delivered to the Snoamish County Auditor's office is August 6th, so there is one more opportunity July 30th if the council wanted to continue this discussion to another meeting. So at this point, I'm available to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and say also, just underscore that in the event that the council is interested in going with the 22 cents as opposed to the 20 cents, I do have a motion here that I can hand out if that's requested. So there's a motion up there for your consideration. And again, if you'd like to do something different, I have an alternative motion here for your consideration. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm excited to move on with this. But first question, can you just clarify again for me, I'm sorry, the difference between the 20 cents and the 22 cents? What that means, what that gets us?
Sure, absolutely. So the difference between 20 and 22 cents would allow then one more staff member to be added. So instead of having four maintenance workers and a CSO, we could have one additional staff member.
Great, yes. I'd be interested in having that.
Okay. I'll bring this down to you, and you still have the floor.
Yeah, we've talked about this like city administrator night said. We've talked about this at length, and I'm all for this one. So I move to approve Resolution 2024-015, a resolution of the city council, the city of Monroe, Washington, relating to regular property taxes, providing for a ballot proposition to be submitted to the qualified electors of the city on November 5th, 2024, in conjunction with the state general election to be held on the same date of a proposition authorizing the city to levy regular property taxes in an amount in excess of the limitations provided in Chapter 84.55 RSW, designated in the city administrator, city attorney, and special counsel to receive notice of ballot title from the Snoamish County Auditor and providing for other related matters. Which resolution shall be as presented to council but revised throughout in order to authorize a maximum regular property tax levy for collection in 2025 of $1.08 slash 1,000 of assessed valuation, an increase from 2024 of approximately 22 cents slash 1,000. Looking for a second.
Sorry, that's the end. All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Hanford, since you made the motion, I'm going to defer to you first. Do you?
Yeah, so just walking around the parks, seeing the incredible amount of work that the Parks Department does, and we've said it here before, our citizens have said that the parks are important, and they are. And like I had mentioned, getting, having the opportunity to go to the Monroe Recreational Cricket League kickoff opening ceremony, they just love our parks and we're so thankful that they have a place now to play cricket at Lake Tye. And these are people coming from all around, not just Monroe. There's two Monroe teams, but there's 16 teams total. So it just, and everybody was like, yeah, Lake Tye's awesome, we love playing there. So it just underscores the fact that we need to, it's time. We need to step back into where the Parks Department should be, and I have a good feeling that if we can write up the ballot correctly and strategically, that this will pass with no problems.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I just wanted to recap the importance of this. I think that it's answering two needs that the city hears routinely from people, and we hear that from parks. We see it on all of our social media posts about our park system. It is a huge source of community pride, and it's one of the closest impacts on people's day-to-day living and standard of living. I think contributions to our park system via tax dollars can lead to some of the realist effects on happiness. I mean, it's different when you consider putting a dollar a month into streets preservation, which I'm a fan of. A pothole being filled is different. That's a bad example. A clean road is different than beautiful, safe park to be able to go push your kid on the swing on. So with the safety aspect of it as well, these are probably the two things that the city hears the most about. So in a way, I feel like this is the city doing its duty and responding to our city's, our residents' needs that they voice. So grateful to staff for putting this together, and I'm looking forward to hopefully a positive result from the voters.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll call for the vote. All right, before I call for the vote, I'm just going to read in that as I call for the vote, I'm just going to confirm with the maker of the motion and the second that it's council's intent to approve the resolution with revisions throughout to authorize a maximum regular property tax levy for collection in 2025 of $1.08 per $1,000 of assessed valuation, an increase from 2024 of approximately 22 cents per $1,000. Zach, do I have that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think it would also be appropriate to clarify that the form of resolution that was provided to council in this evening's packet would remain essentially the same except for those references.
Okay. And by your statement, I'll consider that statement made, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with all that said, there being no other comments, I will now call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Zach. All right, next item on the agenda is item 6.2. This is automated traffic safety cameras with Mr. McCorkle. Good evening.
To present on automated traffic safety cameras. Most of this discussion, or most of this presentation, is mostly just going to be adding some clarifications to the presentation I made previously and then handing it back to council for further discussion and further direction on where to proceed next. So with that, we will go with the next slide. So we have had two discussions so far on automated traffic safety cameras, the first of which being on the June 18 study session where we reviewed the program's history, looked into program requirements, and also looked into preliminary fiscal estimates. And then previously, on July 9th, the regular business meeting, staff brought back potential camera locations, looked into some crash data, and updated fiscal estimates. From that meeting, council also requested further information on program costs, looking at the breakdown of cost per camera, also looking at historic violator data, looking at residents versus non-resident violators, and then also updated information on camera locations and where cameras could be placed. So that is the gist of what I will be presenting here today. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to start out with a couple of clarifications. So staff did some further research and pulled some more documents from 2009 to 2010, and it clarified that red light cameras were placed on US 2. Specifically, they were placed on US 2 at North Kelsey Street with one camera infracting violators moving westbound and a second camera processing infractions for violators moving southbound. So two cameras on US 2, North Kelsey Street, for red lights. It should be noted that if the council decides to move forward with putting red light cameras back on US 2, that will have to be approved and formalized with the Washington State Department of Transportation before that can be moved forward. Additional clarification was sought with the Washington State Department of Transportation and through discussions with our own public work staff. We revealed that the new law that was passed regulating automated traffic safety cameras actually would enable the city to place speed cameras at a couple of additional locations that were not discussed previously, those being school walk zones, which are defined as areas within a one-mile radius of a school property that are surveyed and identified as having a high frequency of student walkers or bikers who are commuting into school. They can also be placed in roadway work zones, which are defined as areas or roadways that are having construction, maintenance, or utility work done for a period of 30 days or more. And then finally, and potentially the most significant, would be, speed cameras can be placed on city streets classified, or highways placed, excuse me, highways classified as city streets, which would apply to major segments of Monroe, including on US 2 and State Route 203. Once again, those would have to be approved by the Washington State Department of Transportation before any of that is approved, in addition to all the necessary surveys. But just to recap, all of the zones that speed cameras can be placed, one more time, they can be placed in school speed zones, public park speed zones, hospital speed zones, shared access highways that are categorized as city streets, school work zones, and also school walk areas. Those are the locations where speed zone cameras can be placed. Other cameras can be placed to detect stoplight violations at intersections and also detecting railroad-grade crossing violations. In addition to all of those areas listed, the city is still able to place up to two cameras outside of any of those proposed locations, as long as we can show that such locations have a higher frequency of crashes or excessive vehicle speeds. So with that, we can move on to the next slide.
Okay, before we move off of that, Councilmember Scarborough.
179th between Park Place Middle and 522 Stop Sign, does that, is that in the area that we can place a camera?
I will have to review the precise locations. This is, that map you see on here is the approximate locations where that can be verified.
I don't see it up there, that's why I think I'm asking.
Yeah, right. So if it's not up there, then I will have to confirm and do some double checking to make sure it's a verified location.
Before we move off this slide, any other questions? All right, go ahead and continue.
I have it written down. Okay, I put this graph, or this map back up one more time from the previous discussion just to help sort out if you, council, wanted to start looking at potential locations where crashes occur most frequently. But I do also want to stop here just to go over the violator data that was found recently. So at the July 9th regular city council meeting, council directed staff to bring back data regarding the percentage of infractions issued to non-residents versus residents during the program's duration from 2011 to 2013. We contacted the city of Bothell to get a better understanding of what their data looked like and also how they compiled their own data to see if we could follow similar processes. But what we found is that the city of Bothell, as they currently operate an automated traffic safety camera program, they simply just pull their data from current vendor data, which is not something the city of Monroe has access to currently because its contract with Red Flex Traffic Systems ended in 2013. So this is not data that we can easily pull, and since at the time that we did have that contract, we didn't pull ZIP code data, it's not something we have currently available. Now, staff would be able to pull ZIP code information for recent officer-issued infractions. However, this will take additional staff time and will not necessarily reflect the infractions that would be processed by automated traffic safety cameras. So keep that in mind before that information is further requested. I also put in your packets the data that the city of Bothell was able to gather for quarter 1 of 2024, showing about 17.4% of infractions that were issued through their school zone and camera enforcement program being issued to individuals who lived outside of Bothell. But once again, council should note, this data is very specific to the city of Bothell and their camera locations, and depending where the city of Monroe would decide to place their automated traffic safety cameras, this information might not be easily transferable to the city of Monroe. So that is something definitely to keep in mind moving forward. Speaking of the importance of location, I will move on to the next slide. So finally, the final point I want to mention is looking at the fiscal impacts. So as requested by council, this table showcases the cost breakdowns that per camera, cost and revenue estimates per camera. I do want to take a moment to especially note some considerations for these fiscal impacts, as I've tried to do through each of these presentations. But these numbers are for preliminary fiscal discussions only. The actual cost per camera is going to vary significantly depending on where the cameras are placed and the number of infractions that each camera is able to process. So for these following estimates, what staff did is we took the average amount of infractions from 2011 to 2013 per camera, which was estimated at about 900, and then estimated that each camera would generate about 900 infractions. So this graph should, could potentially be better read as one camera equalling 900 infractions, two cameras equalling 1,800 infractions, rather than just one camera, two camera, three camera, camera, et cetera. With that said, the location is going to be the biggest determinant of what these costs are actually going to actualize to being. For example, in our program between 2011 and 2013, there were some cameras we had out there that were processing 550 annual infractions, and there were others that were processing about 1,400 annual infractions. Obviously, if we place all of our cameras in the locations processing 550, that calculus is going to be significantly different, just as if we placed them in areas that had a lot more processed annual infractions. So I really want to take a moment to caution those numbers to showcase that it is going to vary significantly depending on the location and the amount of processed infractions. The reason, through these numbers, I didn't go past eight cameras is because past 7,200 infractions that are processed, we are going to start running into issues with the court judge becoming an elected position. So that is also another consideration to note. So with all of that out of the way, I did just want to address one more council question that was brought up last meeting regarding why the estimated net income has decreased from the 2011 to 2013 actual net income. And the reasoning behind this, the very simple answer is since 2013, while anticipated costs have gone up, anticipated revenue has largely remained the same. So for example, the Monroe Municipal Court, which was actually established in 2015 after the automated traffic safety camera program ended, their budget in 2015 was about $300,000, but in 2024, that has grown to over $800,000. So that is a consideration to make in that if we re-implemented this program, we are going to continue to add to that staff cost, that staff time, and resources for the court, not to mention other costs, including the vendor and the cost for staff time have increased since then as well.
Okay, and I'm going to have you pause for just a moment for housekeeping. Please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble joined the meeting at approximately 7:28 PM. Thank you. Go ahead.
With all of that said, just touching on the revenue piece, although the camera costs, anticipated costs have increased since 2013, the anticipated revenue has remained stagnant if we are assuming the same number of infractions. Currently, the Monroe Municipal Code sets the cost of an infraction at $124. So if that cost is not increased, and we are not expecting any more infractions from the camera program, the estimated revenue from the program is not necessarily going to increase. So what you get with higher anticipated costs, but the same amount of revenue generated in 2013, is a lower overall net revenue. So just wanted to make that clarification for why those numbers look the way they are. With that, I will move on to the next slide. And that kind of brings me to my discussion for today. So I listed up some areas of direction that staff could take from council discussion today. Obviously, we have had previous discussions on ordinance 006, 2012. I have attached a draft ordinance just for your information in your agenda packets if the city would like to consider repealing. If the city would like to consider repealing this, the original ordinance, oh oh six, two thousand and twelve, that draft resolution can be looked at further. Additionally, it is my understanding at the last council meeting that council did not want to pursue putting this as an advisory vote during the next general election as to make way for the levied lid lift resolution. If that has changed, you are free to let me know, and I can put something together for the thirtieth meeting, uh, to get that on the ballot. Or if not, I can just take more information on if this is something the council would like to pursue as advisory vote moving forward. Other next steps moving forward, um, in the future are looking into what types of automated traffic safety cameras the city wants to pursue, whether those be school, uh, speeds cameras, um, or red light cameras, or a mixture of both. And then also beginning to identify preliminary locations so that way staff can begin to identify areas for further study and begin conducting the proper equity analyses, um, and get better fiscal estimates, of course. So with that, I will leave it to council for further discussion, or like always, I can answer questions or jot down questions.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McCorkle. Um, I now turn to council. Are there any questions or thoughts on this? Okay, um, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead, and then Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, and I apologize if I missed this. Did we get the data associated? Were we able to determine, uh, the, the infractions that were enforced when we had this in place before, the distribution between whether they were, um, uh, citizens or not, or outside of the city?
Yeah, that was something that, um, I touched on briefly. Just to give a quick recap, we did reach out to the city of Bothell to get more information on how they generated their data to see if we could copy the same process. Uh, but the short answer is the city of Bothell currently pulls all of the reports from their vendor. Since we do not have access to our vendor reports, and since those reports were not generated at the time of the program, we have no way to look into the violator data breakdown by zip code, um, from the duration of the program from two thousand eleven until two thousand and thirteen. Staff is able to potentially pull information from officer interactions and officer issued infractions. However, that's not going to be necessarily the same calculus that you would get from a, uh, from the data we would pull from automated traffic.
If from, but wouldn't that been the, through the county court office, though? Correct? Those infractions?
I believe it would be our court system, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I mean, when, we didn't have ours back then, so those records would be with the county, correct? Or would, because they got to exist, because the tickets were issued.
Right.
I guess I don't, I'm not, that doesn't make sense to me.
Right. What, what I can tell you is I spoke with our court staff, and they said that was not information they would be able to pull. I can go and check with the county one more time.
Yeah. Let's do that. In the Bothell data showed a breakdown between inter-citizens and non-citizens, correct?
It did, and that should be present in your agenda packet.
Yeah, I missed it. Can you just tell me, so I don't have to go looking?
Yeah, I believe it is seventeen point eight percent of violators were from zip codes originating in the city of Bothell.
Okay, that's what the hypothesis was, is we thought it would be closer to eighty percent outside, so that just reaffirms at least that dataset, so it'd just be good to corroborate. But I would think that that dataset would be with the county, because they were the ones that facilitated the tickets. It wouldn't be with on our court system.
I'll go and double check with Snohomish County Courts on their records, but once again, after speaking with our court staff, they told me it was not information that we would be able to get. But I will see what I can find.
Yep, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
We'll hit that first strike. So the areas that we could put them in, off the top of my head, one seventy-ninth Highway two, two oh three and Main Street, as far as speed cameras go. Intersections, so it's two, basically two cameras per intersection. That counts as two cameras for like a red light, there's obviously two cameras there, but they're not counting it as one intersection. Okay, so that would be the use of two cameras.
Yep.
I'm also interested in it going to one forty-five per ticket instead of one twenty-four. Adjusting that city ordinance.
So, um, I wasn't here for the last meeting. One of the things that, uh, I would acknowledge is that there's sort of, uh, a couple of different layers of information here. One, there's a policy question as to whether or not the council wants to change the law and have traffic cameras. And then there are subsequent things like what, you know, if you were to remove the, the ordinance, there'd be a series of other steps, like what would you consider, um, citation fees to be, where would you place cameras, and things like that. So what I'd like to encourage the council to do is to maybe, uh, if you're willing to, uh, to kind of focus on that policy conversation on whether or not this is an ordinance that you want to keep in place, or if you want to repeal the ordinance, or go to an advisory vote. Uh, otherwise, I'm concerned that the staff could spend a lot of time, uh, sort of doing, uh, work when there's still this other decision to be made as to what you want to do with the ordinance itself, so.
Agreed.
Just in case I've missed something, I'm going to turn to staff, but I am concerned about following up on data that would be like the next level of data after this initial policy decision were made. Any thoughts on that, Deborah? Thank you. All right. So back to you, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, and I was going to head that way.
Okay.
Eventually, um, was it oh six, two thousand twelve? Is that the, the number of the?
Yeah, we can put back the slide if you like.
That we have up there. So, um, I would like us to not go to an advisory vote, if that's what we're looking for. I would like to, um, amend what we have with the city and, um, get rid of the advisory vote, uh, criteria. And, oh, so with that, lower level, do we know what the contracts are? Like, how long the contracts last for these different companies? Is it a five-year contract, a two-year contract?
I, I don't know, I don't, off the top of my head, I do not remember the exact amount, but it should be attached in your agenda packets for you to review.
I didn't see, everything was from ten years ago. I didn't know if any of that had changed. I didn't see anything, because I went through there. So I was just curious about that. If we do go this way, um, I would like to make sure that it's a reasonable contract length.
Okay.
And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, one of the things I'd be looking for, uh, for direction coming out of this, because there is sort of, um, a variety of different, at least last time we talked about it, and again, I was not at the last meeting, but there seemed to be, um, a variety of different perspectives on this. It would be helpful to have a motion from the council at some point giving direction on, um, bringing forward, um, material for an advisory vote, or bringing forward material, um, for the council to consider repealing the ordinance, or whatever the case is. So again, just so that we don't spend a lot of time doing additional analysis, having that direction from the council sooner than later, I think would be appreciated. Thank you, um, Councilmember Fisher, Councilmember Hanford, and then Councilmember Scarborough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of different things. If you could go back to, uh, one of the things I wanted to ask for is the chief's thoughts on, on this from a police perspective. But while he gathers his thoughts, um, I'm, if you could go back to page two of the PDF, where it talks about the school walk zones. No, I think it's in the actual bill, agenda bill. Page two, where it talks about school walk zones, right there. Page, page two of the. Yeah. Of the agenda bill, it's just page two. So, um, you, in the, then on the presentation, you showed the map with the school's speed zones. And so there's two different things. There's the school walk zones, where we have a one mile of that, and one of the things you brought up was one seventy-nine, or someone just now, yeah.
One seventy-nine.
Yeah, uh, one seventy-ninth at Park Place. And so, as we know, we've had multiple, uh, conversations about the speeding on one seventy-ninth, not necessarily right at Park Place, but close. And so, uh, that is identified, it says school walk zones. Again, it's really small, are defined areas within a one mile radius that are surveyed as having frequent foot or bicycle travel by students. So that will definitely qualify, since it's literally right there by the school, and everybody from one, down one seventy-ninth is coming up it to the school. So it, to answer your question, it would have seemed that we can, that we can, because it says that, uh, must be established by the city before cameras are placed. So we could say that's a school walk zone, and then we could put up, put cameras one mile down one seventy-ninth, is how I read it.
Right. Sorry, the one clarification I would make to that is we do need to somehow prove that there is that increased foot traffic and increased foot traffic frequency. So yes, the city does need it designated, but we also would need to conduct this survey to back that up. That's why I didn't put that on the map, because I wasn't sure which areas.
Got it.
We could do that.
And, and I'll just, uh, restate also that, uh, staff can go back and look at that information. One of the things I want to avoid is a policy body essentially engineering from the dais, so we, we just want to be real careful.
Sure.
About what we're, um, you know, about how we're answering that question. So, um, uh, staff will bring back some more information on that, Councilmember. Okay, Councilmember, go ahead.
And so, um, I think that, that would answer that question, because the question that, going back to what are you looking for tonight?
Yep.
It talks about, um, what are the, where are the areas? And for me, that's an important area, not just at Park Place, but most of the way, if not all the way down one seventy-nine.
Understood, thank you.
So, uh, before we hear from the chief, the other question I had was what are the courts' thoughts? Have we talked to the courts at all? Have, because we, we were talking about if we go to a certain level, then that is no longer an elected position, right? If we give her so much of a caseload. So do we know, if we pull this trigger, if we go down this path, do we know if we're going to go over the, we're going to bump the courts into that no longer an elected position? Like, how close to that? It wasn't clear to me in the back, like, how close to that threshold are we going to be?
Yeah, so currently, the current contract with Judge Ness is for a maximum of twenty-five hours per week, or about a hundred hours per month. The maximum hours a court judge can work per week is thirty-two, or a hundred and twenty-eight hours per month. So that gives us, on the very tight end, twenty-eight hours per month before the court judge becomes an elected position. After speaking with, uh, court administration, um, they estimated that per nine hundred infractions, you could estimate up to three additional hours, three additional hours per nine hundred infractions, um, for the court judge. So going back to that, um, eight camera, uh, number, that is why we stopped at the eight cameras with those, uh, nine hundred infractions per camera. So that is the wiggle room we have, and that is why, once again, it's very important to conduct locational analysis before any final policies are made, so that we have a better understanding of how many, uh, infractions are actually being processed and how much time the court judge will need to spend on these infractions.
Right, so then, so the current contract is up to twenty-four hours per week?
Twenty-five hours per week.
And it's three hours per?
Nine hundred infractions.
Nine hundred infractions for eight cameras? That's estimating from the eight cameras, we're going to get nine hundred?
So that would be, it would be eight, it would be eight cameras times nine hundred infractions. So we were estimating in those fiscal estimates that I provided, that one camera would infract nine hundred infractions.
Okay. So just, I'm sorry, just do the simple math for me. So we'd be going from twenty-four to what?
Twenty-four, so.
Possibly twenty-five, right?
So currently, it's at twenty-five, yes.
Or twenty-five, sorry.
So it would be eight times three, which would be, uh, twenty-four hours if we did the eight cameras at nine hundred infractions.
Per week.
Yeah, twenty-four additional.
Right?
Over the course of the month.
Oh, a month?
Yeah, and that's a maximum of one hundred and twenty-eight hours.
Okay.
So we would have about four hours of wiggle room with eight cameras at nine hundred infractions.
So twenty-four by, by four, yeah, so six, so we should be up around thirty-ish hours per month, or per week, I'm sorry?
Up to about, uh.
So there'd be some wiggle room, is what we're saying.
There would be a little bit of wiggle room, but once again, we would need the specific locational analysis before that could be confirmed.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that, that answers my, my question on that. I guess, so just practically, I'm just trying to think practically, so if that's what we've contracted with Judge Ness, but say she doesn't want to work more than twenty-five hours because she has other things she wants to do, would we then just have to find a contract for other judges to fill that void, I'm assuming? Probably?
Yeah. It, and, you know, that's another policy choice. I mean, at some point in time, the city could get large enough that, um, that she could find herself, that, that position could find itself hitting that thirty-two hours. And that's something we've talked about, is that.
Right.
We've been increasing the hours over the last ten years just because of, of growth and different things. So, uh, whether it's, um, traffic cameras, or it is any other thing associated with growth in the community, uh, you could, the council at some point, and you can make a policy choice on whether or not they want to, uh, move on to, uh, more full-time or make adjustments at the district, you know, at our local court.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the last thing I just would like to hear is the chief's thoughts on the importance of this from the police department.
I'll go ahead and invite Chief Charlie to come forward and, uh, share any thoughts that he might have on traffic cameras.
Good evening, Mayor, council, councilmember Hanford. Generally, and I'll speak to general terms, traffic cameras provide a level of safety in a community by slowing people down, educational, um, and are a great aid to human resource traffic measures and engineer calming, traffic calming measures. So in general terms, absolutely, it's another tool in the bucket to help slow people down. And that's, I think we can all agree that it's become increasingly, um, obvious that we have heavier traffic flows and the speeds seem to be creeping up, anecdotally. Historically, I've been favorable towards these. In another life, we researched these extensively and looked at them in a community, had worked within a adjacent community that had a very successful program. And previously, Monroe Police Department and the city of Monroe has had a successful program with their, uh, camera system, and I think some favorable results because of that. I'm not sure about the traffic stats. Moving to today, in this particular project, contemporary, I believe that we've accommodated and provided some data to Liam in this project, but I have not researched or kept up in the contemporary means as to what the latest and greatest is out there, and I have not been involved or consulted on this project, nor has the police department, so.
Councilmember?
I don't know.
Councilmember Hanford, you still have the floor? Do you have any follow-up for the chief or anything else?
No, I appreciate, uh, your, your honest, uh, feedback and input, and, uh, that's it for now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Chief, and you're, you also, do I understand that possibly as the education of the citizenry becomes, as they become aware of these in the traffic citations, would they go, do they historically go down there for the revenue goes down?
Yes, that is, that is what reports from other cities have notified. Also included in your agenda packet is a, uh, infographic from the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission that kind of outlines that exactly, how after, up to, even as little as two years, um, the amount of speeding infractions goes way down, which decreases revenue and the amount of infractions that are being processed for speed zones specifically.
Okay. My, my other question was, in our discussion to amend the, the current ordinance?
Repeal, I think is the.
So did, if we vote to do that, we're voting to, um, not have it go to the citizenry, the citizenry advisor as an advisory vote?
So.
In other words, we would be making the decision, is that what, is that what amending that ordinance does?
So not, not necessarily. Currently, what the ordinance says specifically is that, in the case that the city wishes to issue another ordinance that authorizes the use of automated traffic safety. in the case that the city wishes to issue another ordinance that authorizes the use of automated traffic safety cameras, that would have to be put on the next general election ballot as an advisory vote. So if the city decided to repeal that ordinance, they could still decide to put that measure on the, on for an advisory vote at any election, but it's not mandated anymore by that ordinance to be put on the general election ballot. That is what that repealing that ordinance would do.
So is that what we're trying to do?
So if we could just.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, how they feel about that and you.
Thank you. All right, other, other questions, direction for me and staff? Councilmember Walker?
Mayor, I want to apologize because last week there were some, the way I explained how long this decision was taking was that in making a decision like repealing that ordinance, it's kind of a, probably gonna be a big deal, or at least if I was a citizen, I think it would be. So to me, the, the kind of metrics and the plan behind something like this had to be able to justify an action like that in order, in order for it to maybe be for, for me personally, willing, a willingness to kind of override that decision if we want to hear from the voters first. So thank you, Liam, for getting all the, the data on it. My question is, let's say right or today or the next vote that we could, we repealed that ordinance so we don't have to go to the advisory vote, which, and if I understand it correctly, the ordinance doesn't say we have to abide by the advisory vote, it just means we will send it to them. Okay.
Correct.
So if we were to repeal that ordinance the next time that we could, what would the timeline, timeline look like from that meeting on when we would have cameras set up? So did you say there were a few studies that would be required?
Yeah, so the, the most essential step would be we would have to take the proposed locations and conduct a survey of each of those locations, doing an equity analysis, and then also confirming that there is a need for speed zone cameras or automated traffic safety cameras at those locations, whether that be excessive speeding, vulnerable populations using those roadways, or excessive crashes, or even the failure of other traffic mitigation measures. Once that survey is in place, then the city can begin to look into considerations for signing a contract with a camera vendor and begin the process of implementing the cameras from there.
Mayor, in your experience, generally, process like that, what are you, a year, two years?
I would estimate, based on Administrator Knight, I asked her, twelve to eighteen months.
And if we were to say we're gonna send it to an advisory vote in November, does that have any effects on timeline from there?
It's my understanding that the process would remain the same. We would just need to wait until the advisory vote, or to put it on the advisory vote ballot before we can make any action on it.
Okay, so it basically only shifts the timeline three months if, if the advisory vote was positive and we said, yeah, we're gonna go forward with it?
That's my understanding, but once again, to put that on this November's election ballot, we would need to get that to you by next meeting, which is in seven days.
M R S C, previous initiative data, or not initiative, but election data, City of Longview, Washington, in twenty eleven, November twenty eleven, their population was thirty six thousand. They ran two advisory votes. First one was whether the city should continue using red light cameras at intersections. It was voted against, so people wanted the red light cameras eliminated, sixty two percent to thirty eight percent. They ran a second one, and it said whether the city should continue the use of traffic safety cameras in school zones. And it was voted for or don't, don't get rid of them, fifty six to forty four. So in my opinion, if that was in twenty eleven, when I, I haven't looked at the data to confirm this, but my presumption is that there was an ability of law enforcement around the nation to, to give more traffic infractions due to staffing being better back then. Now, with the staffing troubles that law enforcement has had nationwide, with infractions data or quantities being probably a lot lower, I would assume. And there's an overall sentiment, I think, amongst the population that people are driving. Actually, there, there is data on that, people are driving faster than ever. I think that if fifty six percent of the residents in Longview back then voted yes to school zones, not to red light cameras, I would guess that that fifty six percent has probably gone up. I, I would love to run an advisory vote in November if the timeline is only offset by three months. And looking at that, the levy numbers for what it might cost to throw something on there, I think it's two to five thousand dollars. I think that that is a good way to to satisfy the ordinance. Philosophically, I, I would probably, I won't make a statement on, on repealing it. I would love to see the advisory vote first.
All right, thank you. Anything further, council member? All right, council member Gamble?
I agree with council member Walker. I mean, I was here when we, when we put that in place. I, I have my own personal opinions about cameras and I voted for them the last time around. It was pretty stark, you know, result as a no, it was pretty contentious at the time. Meetings that went till midnight, this was a pretty important issue for, for citizens. And I just don't like when we, when we remove something like this without, especially since it says it, you know, in there, that we would take it to an advisory vote. So that's my preference. I may be in the minority, but that's my preference. And then that we would put some statistics that would, that would back up the, you know, the reason behind or the benefit to the citizens, you know, that a majority of the infractions and what we experienced, and maybe, you know, from the chief, we could even get, you know, some data from those tickets that are issued. I imagine we would have that, that are officer interactions that were, that was called out before, where, you know, we really, a lot of the infractions are folks that are not citizens, and it's really trying to curtail, you know, some of that activity and make it safer because the, the red light stuff and the speed, I mean, there's, it, it happens all the time, I watch it all the time. So I, but I would prefer the advisory vote options.
Okay, thank you, council member Beaumont.
I support not going forward with the advisory vote and moving forward with the repeal. Thank you.
Okay, so again, somebody can make a motion or we can continue talking. Councilmember Scarborough?
I support Councilmember Dan Walker.
What I'd like, rather than hearing support, is just a motion for direction, please. Councilmember Fisher?
I make a motion to repeal City Ordinance zero zero six two zero one two.
Okay, can I, can I restate that? Wait, is it as simple as just making a motion to repeal, or should it be a motion to provide direction to staff to bring forward an ordinance?
I would like.
Okay, so let me state that and you can say.
Okay.
Zach Well is going to listen.
I would like Zach's opinion on that.
All right, so it, it sounds like, it sounds like your request was this. I move to provide direction to staff to bring forward an ordinance to repeal ordinance number zero zero six.
Two zero one two.
Two zero.
One two.
One two. Zach, is that, is that good?
That's sufficient, Mr. Mayor, unless the council's preference is to actually attempt to add this to the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I'm not gleaning that that is the, the city council's intent.
Is it your intent that we bring forward an ordinance for consideration at a future meeting to repeal the ordinance?
Future meeting.
Copy that, okay. In which case, if you say so moved, that'll be for.
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved, okay. Okay, so we have a motion basically providing direction to mayor and staff to bring forward an ordinance for council's consideration to repeal that ordinance. Motion was made by council member Fisher, second from council member Fulcher. Now we have discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will not be voting for this, and the reason is what's already been stated. But I would also point out that should it go to an advisory vote and the public vote not in favor of that, it's an advisory vote. It's, it's, it's not locking us into anything. It's just getting their thoughts on it. And I think, like you said, Councilmember Walker, when people hear red light cameras or traffic cameras and whole, they're probably gonna have, like you mentioned, Councilmember Fisher the other week, I want to do my own thing, you know, of course, I'm gonna vote against that. However, when you bring up school zones, then, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, then more people vote in favor of that. So how that all looks on the ballot, it would be something that we can look at. But as far as this vote that we're gonna take right now, I will not be in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Fulcher.
Very well said. I love what you said. I'm still gonna vote with the, the motion, but I love that we all agree on the, the end result here is safety for the people. So whatever happens, you're all my buds.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so I will add that first, this is only providing direction to staff. So people listening now or in the future, you'll have the ability to share your thoughts with the council. And staff will go forward if this passes and, and provide an ordinance for the council's consideration. Also, some of the same things, some of the same points that council member Hanford and others were making about where this would apply once the, you know, when the ordinance, if the ordinance is repealed, you have the same ability after the ordinance is repealed to figure out where you want to apply this. So just, just sharing there that just because the council would repeal this, if that is ultimately the council's choice, that you'll still have the opportunity to discuss where you would like these to be. And part of the informing that will be what a potential consultant or contractor would come up with where good locations would be to be. So this in and of itself is not a, a final decision. There would be a lot of process involved if the ordinance were ultimately approved. All right, and anything else?
Just one clarification to, is that repealing this ordinance does not negate the council's opportunity to have an advisory vote. All it does is allow you to have an advisory vote on elections other than general elections. Right now, your only opportunity to have an advisory vote is November, general elections, one time per year. And so we're rushed right now to make them this November's deadline. If you repeal this ordinance, you can still have an advisory vote. You can just do it at elections in February and March and August and November, which then speeds up your timeline because I think we are going to be challenged with trying to get you a ballot measure next Tuesday. So all this does is just take away the general election requirement and gives you more choices. That's what repealing this ordinance does. I hope that helps.
Thank you. So I have council member Gamble and then council member Scarborough. Again, this is discussion on the motion. Go ahead, council member Gamble.
Yeah, Deb, I, I guess the piece, you know, yeah, but it also makes it where you don't have to. And the, the whole intent of that in there was, so if, if the, if the notion is, is that we're gonna bring, we're gonna repeal it and bring something back that specifies exactly that with the caveat that we will still have an advisory vote that we will take to the public before we would make a decision, then I would be in favor. That's not what's being proposed here. What's being proposed here is to eliminate it and to bring back a resolution, you know, basically to put cameras in. So that's why I won't support. If it was a, to do exactly what you're saying, I would be okay with that, but that's not what's being proposed. That's not what's been on the record for all the council members that are in support of this, is that they just want to repeal it and go forward with the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I think Jason has hit my question, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails of three, four with council members Scarborough, Walker, Hanford, and Gamble voting against. Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, council member Walker.
Love the language to bring a motion to start working on an advisory vote to bring to the public in November.
Okay, so let's, an, an example of that would be I move to provide direction to mayor and staff to bring forward, to bring forward material for council's consideration to places on the ballot in November twenty twenty four for an advisory vote.
And just to confirm, we have to, we'd have to vote on that by next week, Liam?
We would need it by next meeting, July thirty.
Yeah, so your, your option would be to schedule a special meeting to make it happen or next week. And I'm gonna, if you're gonna make that motion after a motion is made in second, and I'd like to turn to staff just so we understand what the timeframes are and we can understand whether or not there are, that can be done in six days. So I gave you a sample motion, are you moving that motion?
Can you ask staff to clarify before I make that motion?
Sure, go ahead. Uh, pendulum?
Yes, so we have to, we would have to have a ballot measure ready for the council packets, technically by, by Friday for next Tuesday's meeting, which doesn't give us much time to, to turn that around. It, can, can it be done perhaps? I think really, the person who's gonna have to write that ballot measure is going to have to be our city attorney Zach Well. So he would have to prepare the, the ballot measure. Keep in mind too, that if we put it on the ballot measure, if we put it on the ballot for November, it's going to be competing then with the, with the levy lift. So you, you could also, again, consider bringing it forward at next November's election or, again, repealing it and changing it to allow you to bring it forward, an advisory vote forward at, at any election, any regular election, as allowed by state law for that end. Because I'm, I'm assuming they're all allowed. Is there any restrictions on when an advisory vote can take place?
Not to mine.
I, maybe Mr. Well knows more too. It's a heavy lift.
Yeah. Mr. Well.
Given everything else we've got on our plate right now.
Attorney Well, go ahead.
I'm unaware of any restriction, but I'll be happy to verify that.
Thank you.
Another option for council consideration would be to do a special meeting if necessary because that is a, a large lift, and even with a special meeting at the end of next week, that still would be a bit of a lift to do. The reason why the levy lift was easier to do is we had a conversation with the council about this that then gave us direction at the end of, beginning of June, I think, beginning of June, we had council direction, which gave us time to put together a document that has all the legally supporting materials. You saw there's a very, I even had to read in the.
It's robust.
I had to read in the providing, the providing officer stuff, so presiding officer stuff. So it's a, it's a different creature. So if you perceive this way, we'll need to see whether or not we can accommodate that. And if not, I would ask council to consider doing a special meeting if necessary to make that August sixth deadline.
I could only wish that I had asked this before council member Fisher's motion. I would say to reassure council member Gamble, I am in the camp of doing both because understanding, I'm sorry to flip flop, but after, after hearing that from you, Mayor, I, I'm not gonna, that cancels it out, I'm not gonna try to make you guys put an advisory vote together. Who knows if we'll get the language right? If I understand it correctly, repealing the ordinance would allow us to run an advisory vote in February?
Yes.
So in response to, to council member Gamble's point, I would like to, I don't think I can formally, actually, I might be able to. If there was a way to, I would make a motion again to repeal the ordinance and ask staff to also bring forward direction and do an advisory vote in February. Because I, I want to do both. If we don't repeal the ordinance, then we would have to wait till. If we don't repeal the ordinance, then we would have to wait till next November. So I I'm sorry.
So here's the thing, um, you have the ability, and I'm going to turn to Jody on this one. Uh, help, I think that he can do in the same meeting a motion for reconsideration, in which case, basically, he can revote on a a previous item. Is that correct?
Yes, and I have some gamble on this one, that I also, if you do the ordinance, which, that's national level, that would, if you go to the advisory, that's not a question.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
So Councilmember Walker, you currently have the floor. You can make a motion for reconsideration on the previous motion. Again, the previous motion was just giving direction to mayor and staff to bring forward an ordinance for council's consideration. You could then do a subsequent motion, um, that, uh, that would, or you could amend that motion or something to provide direction.
Will you yield for a question?
But also include an advisory vote. So Councilmember Walker, you have the floor. Do you want to make a motion to reconsider?
Like to yield to Councilmember Gamble?
I'm sorry, we don't yield.
Okay.
You have the floor. You have the ability to make a motion. Did you want to make a motion at this time? If you're done, I'll go to Councilmember Gamble and he will have the floor.
That's new. We've always yielded.
Um, you have the ability to just stop if you want to, and you can do a motion for reconsideration later.
I'll stop.
Councilmember Gamble, you have the floor.
We could also just make a motion to amend, correct? The existing so that instead of repealing, you just amend that we could take an advisory vote at any election.
Yeah, you could, you could do a motion right now to give direction to staff to bring forward an ordinance that would amend the existing code to to allow an advisory vote at any election. Yes, that would be an option.
I would support that.
Okay, is there a motion? Councilmember Gamble, are you going to make a motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay, so I understand your motion is to provide direction to mayor and staff to, uh, bring forward an ordinance for council's consideration that would allow an advisory vote to be done at any point in time, uh, not just at a general election. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I heard so moved out of your mouth, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, just a second. Is there a second? Okay. Jody, did you, yeah, so I didn't hear a second.
I would like to say.
Okay, so we've got a second on the motion. Okay, um, Jody.
Next one, Mayor, I would, um, recall that, um, we are amending the, um, twenty nine, you know, that, and you try to, that, 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 that.
Understood, understood. Okay, so is it everybody's understanding that this, instead of repeal, and I'm sorry for using the term repeal, this would be basically direction, bring forward ordinance, allow for advisory vote at any point in time? And that's what I understood was the intent?
Yep.
Okay. All right, all right. So I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, second from Councilmember Walker. It's giving direction to me and staff will bring back an ordinance that will allow for an advisory vote at any point in time, not just a general election. Going to turn to the council now. Discussion, uh, Councilmember Gamble, you had the motion, so did you want to speak to your motion?
No, I I I think what this does is it keeps in, uh, in concert with what the original ordinance was, uh, you know, if we repeal it, I mean, the whole idea was, hey, you're not allowed to repeal this without an advisory vote. So the just trust us deal doesn't sit well with me. So just changing it so that the advisory vote can happen before the appeal, the repeal would be done, would be keeping with being truthful, or you know, open and honest to our citizens. That's my stance on that.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hanford, um, and does anybody else have a flag up? Okay, Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, can can staff clarify again for us, just so that we're aware, what would the cost be roughly to put it on a ballot in February or April as opposed to the November one? Because we said two to two to five grand for the November one, correct?
So I I believe I presented that at the last council meeting, so I will have to go back and check that email that I got from the, uh, Snohomish counter county auditor's office. But my understanding is it can be upwards of four hundred to a thousand times more expensive to do something during a special election.
That's a big swing.
Just to clarify, uh, the difference is, I think, um, it was about five thousand for the general election, correct? And it could cost as much as fifty thousand, depending on whether or not the city is the only, um, uh, only agency, um, on the ballot, with the only ballot measure. Obviously, you know, the more crowded the ballot then is, the more individuals, the more agencies have to pay.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up because that's big. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion on the motion? All right, we're going to go go ahead and move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes five, two, with council members Beaumont and Fisher voting against. All right, thank you very much. So we'll bring forward an ordinance, um, in an appropriate schedule for council's consideration. Thank you. Can I go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that that we have everything that you were looking for on the questions to consider. Because I, did, would do we make sure that we said that we want to pursue an advisory vote?
No, I think, I think right now it was a modification of the first question. Should the city repeal ordinance? The answer was that the council is interested in pursuing an advisory vote, not this November, and bringing forward an ordinance for council's consideration that would allow you to decide on the second question, which is the advisory vote. And what I heard was, uh, consensus of a majority wanting to do an advisory vote. So after the ordinance is brought back, we would then have a conversation with council about doing an advisory vote, and if so, when? Does that make sense?
I think so. Okay. I just want to make sure that you have everything you need.
Yeah, I think we do. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
I gotta get the mute button. Sorry about that. I just want to be clear, the the council does want to have one in the November general, but we're, what we're saying is, is that staff is saying that they can't provide one in time for us to approve. I just want to be clear. Is that, that was the vote, right? Was to not and to go the advisory way. The reason why we're making this is because the general consensus is, is we can't get it turned around fast enough or do our due diligence in order to do it justice in a week's timeframe.
Go ahead, Deborah. Okay. Yeah, my my understanding is that that time would be really tight to be able to bring forward that vote in time for the next meeting. You'd have to be looking at a special meeting. If the council wants to do that, we could, we could give that a try.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record. Yeah.
Yeah, just let me clarify. Would you agree?
I would.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I I guess I would just, I guess I would just voice that, in my opinion, this being on this November's ballot would not have any effect on the levy lid lift, because the levy lid lift is exactly that. The cameras is just a policy question. So in my, in my opinion, it's two different things. It's not like it would affect it. Also, in my opinion, due to the excessive costs in November or February or April that we just discussed, I, it's my opinion that we should do whatever is necessary, if we have to have a special meeting, just to make the, uh, advisory vote, uh, come to pass to fruition, um, then that's what we should do to save possibly fifty thousand dollars for the city. To me, it would make sense, um, if we have to, uh, pay the attorney some extra time, pay the staff some extra overtime, whatever needs to be done to meet that August sixth deadline. So, in my opinion, we should try and shoot for the November fourth. If you needed a motion for that, I'm happy to make it. But that, I guess that's why I wasn't quite clear on whatever we're moving on, because in my opinion, we should be shooting for that.
Okay, understood. Let me just clarify, when the the due date for the material is by close of business on August sixth, Tuesday, is that correct?
Yes.
So if the council were to hold a special meeting, if necessary, on August fifth, that would give, again, we've got other things we need to discuss first to make certain that staff can do that, but that would give a week and a half or so for staff to put together something and council then to have a special meeting on August fifth for council to consider doing that. Jody?
The other thing to consider is that we also have to call for pro and con committees to be, so, and we have to want to gauge that, those, the, that approach, all through the one, five persons, it's, okay.
Okay.
So, we, 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 we,
Lights keep going off here. Okay.
Sure.
We're going to take a recess until eight thirty, so we're going to go ahead and recess for seven minutes. I just want to follow up with, uh, staff so that we can, uh, make sure that we've got the information. Okay, so we are in recess until eight thirty P M. Okay, we're, uh, back out of recess. Thank you, council members. So ju- just a, just a couple of items, and and we'll just go ahead and have an open conversation. We'll include Deborah in this and, um, and also, um, Liam. Just trying to sort through. Okay, so we've got a couple of things, um, that staff can inform you about a little bit more. One, uh, it's important for us to know if you want to do an advisory vote, exactly what it is we're going to be doing an advisory vote on. So, um, before we leave this conversation on whether we're going to be able to bring this forward to you, we need to understand, um, more about what the scope is. So is the advisory vote just, should, uh, should the city of Monroe, um, uh, establish traffic cameras? Or did you want to make it more narrow? Should the city of Monroe establish, um, uh, school zone cameras or whatever the case is? You then, um, so so that's going to be something that's important for us to know is just what is the scope of of what it is that you would like us to bring forward. We would then work with our attorney and staff to try to bring something forward. Recommendation would be to do a special meeting on August fifth, because this is due on August sixth. Jody brought up, uh, our clerk Wykoff brought up a really good point, which is that we do need to do a pro and con committee. Uh, so just for your reference, um, in comparison for the levy, uh, we have the time in, uh, in June and July to put together language that's well thought out. Now that the council has voted on the levy, uh, lid lift, um, she is going to go ahead and issue a notice tomorrow to find people who are both, uh, pro and con to write the pro and con statements. The names of the pro and con people are due to the, um, due to the county the same day that the, uh, the ballot language is due. And then, just like you, when you run for office, um, you have so many days to get in, like your bios and pictures and things like that. So what, whoever this committee is then has, um, approximately two weeks.
It's August twelfth.
August twelfth, so August twelfth, so so from August sixth to August twelfth, to be able to get together and, um, be able to have their pro and con statements and get them submitted, uh, to the, um, to the county. So just letting you know that there's a tight timeframe for those folks also. In my prior experience, I I'm pretty certain that it was the, does, does the, uh, does the council have to approve the pro and con committee? How does that work?
That's actually delegated, um, to mayor and city administrator for the ballot.
Okay, all right. The the other thing too to consider is is just, um, getting information out to the community. So that that's the other thing too, is just making certain you've had time to to share the question and the pros and cons with the community. So that's the other thing. And I turn to Deborah and Liam and Jody and see if there's anything that we discussed, and Zach, to see if there's anything else that we discussed that we might want to share before I ask council, what sort of questions they have.
I think one of the, um, thoughts that I had is part of the challenge with putting out an advisory vote for this November is explaining to people the types of cameras and the locations of cameras and why those, um, locations were selected. So one option that council could consider is, i- if you're going to stay with a general election, there's still plenty of research, as Liam has described, that needs to be done, even just to get to the point where we would want to, um, consider traffic safety cameras, the locations, the revenue that would be generated from them, how that revenue would be used. All of that time, as we've discussed earlier, that effort takes twelve to eighteen months. So we could be working on all of that. So the council then could consider in twenty twenty five, putting something on either the primary or the general election. We already have council members and a mayor that will be in the general election, so we're already going to be paying, um, to have items on the ballot as it is next November. So that would give us time then for the communication and the outreach and all of that stuff leading up to an advisory vote, so you could potentially have a positive outcome from that vote. My concern is, after talking to staff and the attorney, is if we rush forward, we're literally not going to have enough information to share with people for them to have a positive vote. We know nothing. And and that, I think, is not going to instill confidence in any of this work. So my preference would be that we, council provide direction to mayor and staff to go and really start working on traffic safety cameras, really come back with what is the cost for the, for the cameras, you know, what is the, um, agreement between the city and whatever camera, um, system we decide to, uh, look at? What are the locations? So that would give us all the opportunity to do this study. So then the webpage and the communications and all of that outreach would have all of it, all of that information on it, and people would be prepared for what's coming, right, with this vote. So I think in listening to the council conversation and what outcome you're trying to seek, I think that is a potential path forward for you, that would get, I think, what everybody's trying to accomplish.
Okay, so, uh, turn to council, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
So with that being said, do we need to take another vote or do we leave it as it is? And that's where we are with what you would like and what we would like as time to inform the citizen? Or do we have to have a, another motion to change it to that thought process?
I think you could just provide direction to staff.
Yeah, because your your motion was to provide direction. And so if if the majority of the council is willing to to wait, then we can provide additional information and bring that information forward. We can even engage the Public Safety Committee, if that's something that the council wants to do, to have a group of people look at it in more detail, or we can, uh, use the the council, uh, to bring back information. So, uh, you've got a couple of options there. The one thing that I would do is go back and clarify the earlier motion to bring forward an ordinance. Forgetting where we were on things, so.
Yeah, so I was on the sound right now, the, uh, there was a vote that, uh, to, right, or the, you were then supposed to call this, well, to allow, and then I, we, we, we.
Yeah, so I, what I would do is that if the if the council wants more information, I can, you know, we can certainly revisit that and see if you still want us to bring forward the ordinance, or just bring forward additional information.
Well, I think there's credence to the comment that we're rushing it. And I'm, I'm for not rushing it. However, that comes out as what we say is an ordinance or a change, let me know so I'm.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Foulter.
Our last motion and what I agreed to was that we are opening ourselves up to have an election, have a advisory vote at any time, at any election point. What I did not agree to was to have it on the next ballot. In no way am I going to support that, because I will not endanger the levy lid lift, just so we're clear on that.
Thank you. Other, uh, comments or direction from council? Councilmember Fisher?
Um, just that there is no timeline, no rush, no expense if we don't go to an advisory vote. I'm still against the advisory vote.
Okay, Councilmember Hanford? And then Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you, Mayor. I. I am in favor, since you're asking for input of the advisory vote, however, after hearing from Administrator Knight, that all totally makes sense. And so my thought would be to, that we should do all the studies now and prep and plan for an advisory vote in 2025, so a year from now. That would be my thought. There's not like an urgent rush to get it by this November. My thought was just to save a bunch of money if we're looking at February or April. But given all that information, another year would be great to document areas, build the case, so we could present it to our residents.
Okay. Council member Beaumont, and then council member Campbell, and then council member Walker.
I think that trying to rush this places an undue burden on staff and is very unrealistic. And we have our plates overflowing with a lot of other projects. And Deborah, I appreciate your calm demeanor. And Liam, thank you for the presentation. Both of you have made this, just presented information in a very clear way that's understandable. This is a little bit of a sticky wicket trying to understand it all. And I appreciate both of you and your clear way of presenting things that allow us to understand. I am going to concur with council member Fisher that I feel that we are elected to lead. I think leadership is required in this case in terms of asking people, do they want this again? After going back 10 years and asking them, they all indicated that, well, correct me if I'm wrong, because it wasn't on council, but it sounds like the public support was not there 10 years ago. I think it's a very different climate now. I think we have grown substantially. I think that there is a traffic and speeding problem, especially in school zones. I think people would be very supportive of this. And it would eliminate a lot of staff work and a lot of money to go without an advisory vote and show our leadership here and put this, put cameras in Monroe and take care of our citizens, protect our pedestrians and our students in school zones. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who did I say was next? Campbell, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, what Deb said makes a lot of sense. You know, the, from my perspective, I think what she was trying to convey is that we all are in agreement. I mean, I think that we all want them. I mean, I think we're all in alignment there. We think there's a benefit. And everything that she is saying is that we should be doing that and gathering that data for us to tell the story regardless, whatever side of whether you're on advisory vote or not. We should be providing that data. My, and so I'm all for, you know, doing that, getting the data, doing it the right way. I still think we should do the revisal of it so that, hey, that, you know, at least the option's there. We don't have to do it. Is it, well, it can depend on the ballot if there's a special election, and it doesn't cost that much. At least we have it as a, you know, as an option, as opposed to just being limited to the November timeframe. And then, you know, I just, the reason why I'm so on the advisory is we have a lack of trust of government in this country right now. And I just feel this is an easy way for us to help with that, is that, you know, we have something specifically on the books that says, hey, don't repeal this without an advisory vote. And for us to just ignore that in light of today's climate, I just don't think that's in good taste. So that's where I'm at.
All right, thank you. Council member Walker, did you have your flag up? Okay, go ahead.
Or sorry, City Administrator Knight, I would love to provide direction to staff to proceed with those studies that you were mentioning, everything that you said. If we could start getting the ball rolling on that 12 to 18 months of work now, whatever we can accomplish before an advisory vote, that would be awesome. And I understand, I'm with council member Campbell, but I also want to relieve staff of the burden. I mean, I don't think there's any rush to getting through the modification of the ordinance. So as you said, Mayor, about I can kind of put the brakes on it for, I don't know, a month or two, but I think the motion still stands, or I wouldn't change my vote on it.
There's, I think that, given the direction that we've already been given, unless there's a motion for your consideration, we'll bring forward the ordinance as directed by the council. I think that as part of the agenda bill, we can go ahead and explain what the next steps would be. Like I said before, you can always do this concurrent study where you could adopt this ordinance and also study stuff if you wanted to, or you could go to an advisory vote, or you could just, you know, make a change to the ordinance and say, you know, no advisory vote's required. But where I'm going with this is that we will bring forward the ordinance, we'll provide you with some detail as to what it would mean and what a scope, schedule, and budget would be to do those studies. And then the council can have an open conversation about that and give us direction. We can incorporate that into the 25, 26 budget if necessary and then move forward. Does that sound good?
Awesome.
All right. So where we're standing right now, because there was a lot going on there, I just want to make it clear, we have a motion, we have an affirmative motion to bring forward an Nobody to motion in seconds to do the advisory vote in November, so we're good there. And there's no other pending vote right now, and I'm just double checking with, triple checking because I've already teams do. Okay, all right. So is there any objection to what I've just laid out there, that bringing forward ordinance and part of the agenda bill will be information on scope, schedule, budget for bringing forward the additional information? All right, that's what we'll do. All right, now we're ready to move on to the next item on the agenda, yes? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, new business item number 7.1. This is a word, change of scope request, take the next step, mental health individual classes. And Rachel Adams.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and council. The, this item is fairly straightforward. It's moving, it's reallocating $2,000 from supplies and materials into the licensed therapy and supervised intern line. Moving this $2,000 with, in the requested budget line, could provide 10 sessions more of mental health support to an additional four people, which is 40% of the current waitlist. This change of scope request was brought to CHSAB and is now being recommended that council consider approving. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, turn to council, council member Beaumont.
Thank you, Rachel. I had one quick question, and that is that on both 7.1 and 7.2, the attachment seems to be the same. And I was just wondering, was there supposed to be a different attachment for staffing versus the classes?
Yes, there is supposed to be a different attachment.
Okay.
The information in the agenda would have been taken directly from the attachment.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for clarification or a motion? Council member Beaumont?
I move to approve the change of scope request from take the next step for transfer of funds from the supplies and materials line item to the licensed therapist and supervised intern line item for their individual mental health classes.
We have a motion from council member Beaumont, a second from council member Fisher to approve the requested action, shown in new business item 7.1 displayed on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 7.2, award change of scope request, take the next step program, staffing, Rachel Adams.
This item does not change the total amount of the award, but changes how the funds can be used to expend the, to help satisfy the final grant total. Take the next step during their application and award process, transition from a single executive director to a co-executive director model. And so they are requesting that the second executive director be, also can, expense also be allowed as a reimbursable expense. It does not, the request impacts $10,700 of the existing $72,000 award. No additional funds are being requested. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Council member Beaumont?
I move to approve the change of scope request from take the next step for increasing the total allowable staff from one co-executive director to two in the benefits allowance slash payroll taxes line item.
A motion from council member Beaumont, a second from council member Hamford for the requested action, new business item 7.2 is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 7.3, MFR coaching and consulting, change of scope request, Rachel Adams.
This item is a change of scope to allow a transfer of $2,500 from the change agent coaching line into the travel line item. No additional funding is being requested. This impacts $2,500 of an $80,000 award. The project will have a final total of $75,543.55 with $4,456.45 being returned to the city general fund.
Go ahead, council member Fisher.
I just have a question about the travel expenses.
Yes.
It's not really lined out what those travel expenses are. So I was just a little bit curious about that, traveling to and from, I think with the ARP funds too, it was things that need to happen within the city limits, correct? It was not, it was just for the city of Monroe?
It was to benefit residents of the city of Monroe.
Yeah, I was just curious if.
The facilitator, I believe, traveled into Monroe. On the change of scope, it talks about facilitator travel.
Okay, like just driving a car into Monroe? That's, I just had some questions about that.
Yeah.
If, you know, what we were talking about with actual travel, I would probably like some more line items probably for that to.
I could certainly ask for clarification on that.
Thank you.
Did you want clarification on that for interest or as part of making a decision on this?
I would like it on a decision.
Okay. You okay with bringing this back?
Yes.
Nothing timing? Okay. All right, we'll bring that item back. Any other discussion on this item? Okay. Next item on the agenda is 7.4, new business. This is Kroger opioid settlement with Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. The request this evening is to authorize the mayor to sign the settlement form, which is provided in the agenda packet as attachment one. And the policy question for the council this evening is whether the city should participate in the Kroger settlement in order to be eligible to receive compensation under the settlement agreement. The city's proportionate share of the settlement would be approximately $84,000 paid out over 11 years. So the background on this is that Washington State filed a lawsuit in December of 2022 against Kroger for, quote, illegally, recklessly, and negligently fulfilling opioid orders without adequately investigating red flags or fraud for over-prescribing. The company, as part of the settlement, did not admit any wrongdoing or liability, but they also agreed to change their business practices regarding powerful prescription painkillers. The city council has approved the execution of the ONE Washington Memorandum of Understanding in April of 2022, and that established the allocation formula for distributing future settlement funds between participating Washington cities. Since then, the city has joined three settlements against opioid distributors, pharmacies, and manufacturers. The settlement money must be spent on opioid remediation to abate the opioid crisis, and there's a list of approved strategies outlined in the ONE Washington Memorandum of Understanding. The deadline to sign the settlement agreement is August 12th. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion from the council? Council member Scarborough?
So basically, this is free money.
For the city of Monroe, yes, it's money coming to us, but it is in effect to mitigate for the impacts of opioid over-prescribing on our population. So there have been costs to the community, and this is supposed to remediate those, help remediate those costs.
It doesn't jeopardize any other grants or monies that we could get.
It does not.
Okay. Good, thank you very much. Council member Walker, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the settlement participation form, attachment one for Kroger.
Beaumont, second?
Yeah, I have a motion from council member Walker, a second from council member Beaumont for requested action in new business item 7.4. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Oh, okay. Motion passes 6-1 with council member Foulter voting against. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is council member reports. We'll start off with council member Campbell. Council member Campbell?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Council member Beaumont?
I attended Music in the Park on Friday, first time this summer, and it was wonderful. Had a great time. Well done Parks Department and city staff. Attended the ribbon cutting at the new pickleball courts this afternoon, and as an eight-year member of the Parks Board, I gave Mike and Ben a high five, and Ron Petrick and a lot of people I served with. That was a long time coming, and it was so great to see it come to fruition, and people out playing and kids having fun, and Mike just so cool, so happy about that. And last but not least, have a CAC meeting with council member Hamford on comp plan with the planning department on Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Fisher?
I'm skipping around there.
I'm skipping around.
Let's see, also went to the pickleball ribbon cutting. Super fun. We're talking about parks now and the ballots and all of those things. It's such a great thing to keep our residents out moving and doing fun things and interacting with each other, and pickleball's awesome. Also paddled the river, Sky Comish, did that, wear your life jackets and be safe about it, will ya? And then also went to an elected officials, I don't know, what would you call it, that we were at, a get-together, yeah, meet and greet with some of the elected officials that are on the ballots and running for different positions this next November coming up, or this November coming up, which was great, to see what their views are and how important our city is to them, our whole adjustment with the 12th district, right? And just getting them to know us and us getting to know them. So it was great, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Scarborough.
I too attended the pickleball ceremony today. It was great to see everybody there and great to see we're still doing things for our parks and our people.
Thank you. Council member Hamford?
Thank you, Mayor. Pickleball ribbon cutting was fantastic. Loved being there, loved to see the setup. Was so happy to see councilors playing. Unfortunately, the courts were full, so I had to go to Lake Tye to play there. That's all, thanks.
Thank you very much. Council member Foulter?
I am on, okay. I was at the Music in the Park thing on Friday. Really amazing turnout, and as always, even during that hot weather, good job on the, making everything happen there, Mike. That was great. And it's really, it sounds undignified to say pickleball, but I was there, so. And I kind of whooped people, so you're on. It's great.
Thank you. Council member Walker?
Pickleball ribbon cutting was awesome. Forgot to mention, I attended a ribbon cutting for a boba tee establishment by Safeway a couple of weeks ago, and that was very cool. Loved seeing new businesses open in Monroe. Music in the Park was amazing. I love seeing those Parks trucks sitting there in the corner, because you know they're working hard, always, appreciate that. Couple of follow-up items that I've heard from residents. Saw a lot of conversation about asks for the roundabouts to be repainted. I know that's more of a Monroe listens question, but it popped up on the screen tonight, the collision data. So I think that'd be awesome to prioritize. And then on Kelsey, North Kelsey, when you are pulling onto Highway Two going westbound, there is that yield lane to get on the Highway Two. It actually has a lane. It actually has a lane going westbound. Uh, I think the yield sign applies to people taking a U-turn from Highway Two or, or from eastbound Highway Two to get westbound. Uh, folks don't realize that that lane there is actually their protected lane. This came from a, a police officer, um, who told me, uh, told me this, and it leads to a lot of traffic back up there. And, uh, I, I would love to ask for follow-up or, or some, uh, attention paid to that, to see if there's anything we can do with, uh, the DOT to help mitigate that, whether it's those little poles or, or something. Um, other than that, appreciate the discussion tonight.
Cool. Thank you. Um, all right. That's it, Chair of the Council and Staff Department reports, Community Development, June 2024, Director Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, so our project highlight for June for community development is, is to, is an update on the outreach that we've been doing for the comprehensive plan. We were not at pickleball, but with a, but maybe we should have been. Uh, maybe, maybe when we have another ribbon cutting. Uh, but we are going out as a department to play there later this, later this month. Um, as you know, June is a big, is a, I know there's a hustler over here, so, um, I saw him play. The, um, June is really a, a, a big kickoff for events for the summer and in the city and community development has been involved in a lot of those, uh, and including the farmer's market where we've had building division and planning have been, uh, at Farmer's Market. The city has a booth there every, every week. Community development is finished with what we're going to do at the Farmer's Market, but we also had booths at the block party, uh, Juneteenth, Pride. Um, we also had a comprehensive plan update open house, which was actually held here in this room. Um, one of the council members have mentioned earlier, we're having our last CAC meeting Thursday, and on that same day, we are, um, in the same way that we went to the high school to talk to the students and to do our land use game, uh, we're going to do the same thing at the senior center earlier in the day, so, um, hope to get a, a good turnout for that. We're kind of winding up the, the outreach, the public outreach for the comprehensive plan. I believe the last, uh, city event we'll be at is, um, National Night Out. And as you, as you've seen, staff has been coming to council with a number of the, of the chapters of the comprehensive plan, so we're finishing that up and, um, we're planning to, we're looking at doing a joint planning commission city council meeting before we come back and start doing, uh, the public hearing, so keep, keep, keep your eye out for that. Couple of other highlights, I, we're, we're seeing, we're seeing a, a number of multifamily development, uh, proposals. One of the, this is just a pre-app, but, but it's, um, uh, a project that's over on, off of 177th, right off of Main Street, which is back behind the, the school bus barn. There's an RV storage lot there, which, which really was sort of a surprise to staff, and they're looking at redeveloping that. Again, just a pre-app, they haven't sent in an application, but they, they seem serious on that one. And with that, I will conclude, unless anybody has any questions. Oh, um, Wendy's is still progressing, because I have to just say that every time I come up here. They will eventually open. I, I confident of that.
Okay. More fast food. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Uh, I saw something on here about Station 32 with the fire department.
Yes.
I was, I haven't heard about that yet, so it just kind of sparked my interest a little bit, of course.
It was a pre-app that they, that they held. Let me, let me get to the, um, so they're, it, they're looking at the location that's on Oak Street. It's back behind Coastal. Um, there's a number of things going on with that area, one being that the city is looking to, um, expand improvements along Oak Street, including sidewalks and, and, and bike lanes, which is going to require some right-of-way expansion, but, um, so I don't know at this time whether they'll move forward on that at all, but it was just, it was, it was a very preliminary pre-app with them, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or, uh, questions for Director, I play Director Gamble.
That's okay.
That's okay. Director Bailey, we'll go with Director Bailey. All right. Thank you very much. Um, the next person then is Greg Thremer from the Finance Department for the Staff Department Reports for Finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Greg Thremer here, interim finance director. You have in your packet the, uh, the, uh, finance report for the month of June. Um, that we're in the second year of a two-year budget and we're at the halfway point. And, uh, so it looks like our sales tax is down below budget about 3.3% at this point in the year. Um, let's see. I don't want to go through all of it. I guess I would just submit it to, uh, to you all for your review and approval and ask if there's any questions about that report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our, uh, for Greg Thremer for the report? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Um, over the course of the year, how much are we down with sales tax? That 3.3% was just for this month, is that right? Or last month?
Um, that's, that is correct. So, let's see. So it looks on the, on the sales tax analysis, we have, um, oh, gosh.
That's okay, you can get back to me.
Looks like, yeah, we're down about 105,000 or so. Um, I can get back with better numbers. I'm kind of flipping through my pages.
No, that's totally fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll get back more information to you.
Yeah.
Any other, uh, questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item then is Mayor Administrative Reports and Administrator Knight, the extended agenda.
No, it's no worries, because I'm also trying to pull it up on the, on my screen too, so I can actually read it from where I'm sitting. That would be helpful, although it doesn't look like there's that much, so I think I can read it. Thank you so much. We do have a special, um, meeting on Tuesday, the 30th, next Tuesday. Um, we had originally scheduled three items, but I don't believe that the branding update will be ready, so we're going to move that off until August. But we will be, um, hearing from two multi-residential, um, mixed-use housing developers, one with a rental product and one with an owned, an owner product. So, uh, that information will be available and you'll be able to ask questions of those representatives. And then, uh, Patrick Doherty and I will be presenting the 2044 Draft Economic Development chapter for council consideration. And then the August 6th meeting will be canceled, um, in celebration of National Night Out, which is a holiday here in Monroe.
It's a holiday. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, anything, any notes, uh, for the extended agenda for the council? All right. Thank you. Um, City Administrator Report.
There you go. If you have not yet filled out your meal choice and returned it to the clerk, please do so tonight, and then, uh, be sure to submit your narrative to the clerk by noon on Friday, July 26th, that's this Friday, uh, for the Fair Days Parade. I know that, uh, Janelle reached out and said that she needed to know who was going to be driving your car and, um, any changes, I think, to the banner on the side of the vehicle? And then there was one more thing that I can't recall. I think this is. Yes, exactly. You can, um, give that to Jody, and Jody will, um, pass it on to Janelle. If you mislaid your form, again, just reach out to Jody and she'll be able to email you a new one.
Councilmember Gamble, you might see some photographs of your menu choices. Okay. Um, Councilmember Beaumont, you put your, your flag up? Did, did it get answered? Okay.
I was just going to, uh, reiterate what, or say what Jody said about the narrative and why, and I was very confused by that last year. And yes, it's when you approach the, um, the bandstand, they do a little spiel on you. So may we just write that out and email it to you, or is there a specific form that Janelle wants? Okay. Gotcha. Yep. Is there a word count? Okay. Thank you.
They're going to be reading it on the PA, so just think about how much time. I, I know they've used my bio. Yeah, they've used my bio in the past, and sometimes it just feels a little too long. So, yeah. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
So I think Jake had a good idea. I think we should each write somebody else's at some point. So.
I can't write about myself.
I, I, I pick Jake.
So on, on the issue of the Monroe Fair Days Parade, um, Councilmember Scarborough, who, uh, is the shepherd of our signs, and I thought I had one of my signs in my, in my garage, but, uh, you're, you're missing, you're missing somebody's signs though. Jason.
I think I heard my name. It, it, when people don't talk on the mic, I can't hear, or what's going on, uh, but something about signs.
Yeah, do you have your?
I do. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to, to join this year, so, but I do have my signs.
Okay. And who else was, who else, did, were you missing signs for?
Well, we got to have new signs for Jake and.
Okay.
Miss Beaumont.
Understood. All right. Thank you. All right. Um, anything else, Administrator Knight?
Not for me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, we're now going to go on to the Mayor's Report, and I have one minute to deliver this so that Jody can be right. Um, so, uh, I don't know. Um, cool ribbon cutting. Thank you. Uh, I appreciated the conversation this evening. Thank you for allowing me to try to figure out the structure and everything, so I know that gets frustrating with me wanting to get direction sometimes, but I saw a lot there, and I just wanted to make certain that staff and I had clear direction as to what the body wanted. So, uh, thank you for your patience working through that. Um, and I almost have another 30 seconds. Um, anyway, uh, happy to see all of you, and, um, I'm going to end it now. So unless there's objection, we are adjourned.